Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance to our nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would the clerk conduct a roll call?
Heidi, Clinker?
Here.
Nargie?
Here.
Reynolds?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Alers Meyer?
Here.
Williamson?
Here.
Downey?
Here.
Campbell?
Here.
Pour in prison.
Any... You have received the minutes of our previous meeting, which was the, uh... What was the date of that?
Yeah. June 6th.
June the 6th. Had time to examine them. Are there any corrections to those minutes? Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve them. So, by Mr. ...
Please approve as communicated.
Second by Mrs. Nargie. All those in favor of accepting those minutes as communicated signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those same sign, thank you. Presentation of petitions and communications.
There are none.
Presentation and disposal of claims.
There are none.
Reports of city offices which are on file in the city clerk's office.
Fleet Mon- Maintenance Monthly May, Water Works Department Monthly May, Water Pollution Control Department Monthly May, and Police Department Monthly May, and a report for 2015.
All of those reports are available in the clerk's office, I said, during office hours for your examination. Ordinances for second reading.
Ordinance 2016-11, an ordinance to amend the amended ordinance 2015-17, and ordinance fixing the salaries of the appointed officers and employees of the City of Lafayette, Indiana, for the year 2016, excluding the sworn protective occupation and law enforcement members of the police and fire department.
Any comments or by members of the common council? Yes, ma'am.
I move we hear and approve ordinance 2016-11.
My second. Hi, Mr. Brown, thank you. Any questions by members of the common council? Mayor?
Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen of the council, I'll make this brief this evening since it's for our second reading. As you know, we're using this opportunity to restructure our Economic Development Department. We had an employee leave earlier in the year, and as we always do, it gives us a good opportunity to sit down and evaluate the structure of that department, the duties, the tasks, kind of what our goals and what our priorities are going forward. And after doing that, we decided that we really did need to change that position and move that position up to an Assistant Director of Economic Development. As you know, there is a lot going on in this community, and economic development looks a lot different than it did even five years ago, and it's a continually changing ground in which we work on, and as you know, we compete certainly in a global economy. A little bit later tonight, Dennis Carson, our Economic Development Director, will be giving you his presentation on kind of his update on what's going on, and I think that will demonstrate for you really well the depth and the breadth of the different types of activities and involvement that we have within that department, and why this change is necessary to really meet the needs of our community and to help keep us competitive, whether it's economic development, quality of life, how we look at infrastructure, downtown development. It all plays together, and we think this position with the job description we put together will help us meet those needs. As I stated at the other reading, we are not asking the council for any additional money. We have managed our money well, and we have timed things, and we can do this without asking for any additional funds and stay within the appropriated budget for 2016. So with that being said, I'd entertain any questions, and certainly would ask your approval on second and final reading.
Any questions, the mayor?
Perry.
Just one. Have we been doing any internal or external recruiting yet?
Well, we've, uh... We'll be doing interviews. The posting has went up, and we've got some people that we'd like to interview, and we'll be doing those later on. We get this final vote done tonight to make sure the council was going to be supportive. We'll go ahead and conduct those interviews, and I feel confident that we are going to find a candidate that will meet the needs and actually exceed our expectations for our community.
Okay. Any other questions by members of the common council? Thank you, mayor. Any members of the audience wish to react to this particular ordinance? There being no comments, once again, the council. Would the clerk then conduct a roll call vote on ordinance 2016-11?
Clinker?
Aye.
Nargie?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Alers Meyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downey?
Aye.
Ordinance passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Ordinance 2016-12.
An ordinance concerning refunding by the City of Lafayette, Indiana, its sewage refunding revenue bonds of 2006, authorizing the issuance of Sewage Works Refunding Revenue Bond for such purpose, providing for collection, segregation, and distribution of the revenue of sewage works and safeguarding of interests of the owners of said sewage works refunding revenue bonds, other matters connected therewith, and repealing ordinance is inconsistent herewith.
It's a pleasure of the council, Mr. Brown.
Mr. President, I move we hear and approve ordinance 2016-12 on second reading.
Mrs. Alers Meyer. Any comments prior to Mr. Jones's presentation? There being none, Mr. Jones.
Mr. President, council members, as was presented at the last meeting, we're asking for permission to refund the 2006, excuse me, revenue refunding bonds for water pollution control. The original bonds funded the construction of the Prairie Oaks Lift Station and some forest maintenance and some other infrastructure on the south side of the city, and we have refunded this once before. Because of that, we actually cannot put these out on the market until October so that the... Due to IRS rules, if we did it before then, it would take away the tax exempt status for the bondholders. So, we are going to ask, or not put this out until October, but at that time, we will have about $21,805,000 worth of principal left, and the interest rate seemed to be still holding quite steady, and it still makes a lot of sense to do this. We did ask the financial advisor to build in a little rate increase, although we're not expecting that to happen, and even with that increase, we're looking at a very conservative savings of a little over $1,540,000, or about 5.7% net present value. It still looks like a very, very positive thing to do, and I would ask your approval.
Any questions? I guess I have one. Why are we doing this now, and this is October?
Well, to get everything out of the way and be ready, to try and place this, be ready to go when the time comes, and in case there is an interest rate increase, that we would be first in line to sell our bond.
And if I can add a little bit, once the council's given its second approval, then the financial advisors and our bond council have to prepare official statements that start the process of circulating to rating agencies for the rating of the bonds, and that has to be done by the middle of August because of all the steps involved to be ready to go ahead and actually sell our bonds by the first of October. So there's quite a few steps involved that they can't take until the council's approved the ordinance on the second reading.
And given the size, I doubt we could get a private placement.
Yeah, it's pretty big.
Any other questions, Mr. Jones? Thank you, Mr. Jones. Members of the audience wish to address any questions or concerns? There being none, council. Would the clerk then conduct a roll call vote on ordinance 2016-12?
Clinker?
Aye.
Nargie?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Alers Meyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downey?
Aye.
Ordinance passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Ordinances for first reading.
Ordinance 2016-13, an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of Tiptonew County, Indiana, to rezone certain real estate from I-3 to GB, Carl and Michelle Mullen petitioners, 3477 South Street.
Mr. Downey?
I move to approve ordinance 2016-13.
Mrs. Williams?
Second.
Any questions or comments by members of the common council? Mr. Reynolds?
This was probably before the APC had unanimously voted on. This was a section of property on 26th that somehow got I, both sides of the road. We approved the other side, I think, last year, I believe it was, and fits right in, GB fits right in with what's going on.
So that would bring everything within continuity and...
I think that's the last, isn't it, Mr. Chosnick? Wasn't that the last one?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, there's been a... It was originally an industrial zoning. It's all been zoned GB because it's industrial, it's gone to a different area, and this is one of the few parcels remaining that's still I-3.
We got in fields, which was fields in from across, and now chatters are in there, should have brought that.
Thank you. Anybody representing this? I see a couple of folks that might be.
Lynn Wilson, I am representing the seller, Mr. Mullen. And you're right, it is a, uh... An island in the middle of the GB, and how it's stayed the I-3 for so long, we don't know. But it is, does make good sense to go ahead and do a GB for any future sale or retail business that may move into that.
Any questions of Mr. Wilson? Yes, ma'am.
Are they tearing the building down or keeping the building?
Uh, presently, we have a buyer that's in the process of looking at all the, um, things that can happen with that building, and as it stands right now, they plan to just get the interior because it's a clear span with six inch concrete, so it could do motorcycles or any type of retail at all would be sustainable in there. And with the docking area, it makes sense to maintain it as a retail business.
Do they have enough parking there? It's kind of an odd place to get in and out of.
Depends upon the business, I believe, that goes in there.
Okay.
Yeah, please.
Kevin Riley with Riley Institute here in charge. We also represent, uh... Involved in this matter. Again, it depends on what use goes in. I think there may be a plan to go to the Lafayette BZA.
Could you folks speak up? I think, maybe, I'm not the only one of us.
No, I wasn't speaking into the microphone, I'm sorry. If there is a shortage of parking for what their intended use is, then they would go to Lafayette BZA and request a variance for parking.
Okay, we were just curious what was happening with the building there.
Yeah, but I don't think that changes the fact that GB is appropriate for this site, though.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions of Mr. Wilson? Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Any questions or comments from members of the audience concerning this particular rezoning? There being none, once again, the council. Would the clerk then conduct a roll call vote on ordinance 2016-13 on first reading, final?
Mm-hmm. Clinker?
Aye.
Nargie?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Alers Meyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downey?
Aye.
Ordinance passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Ordinance 2016-14.
An ordinance permitting fees that the City of Lafayette may charge for computer reports, accident reports, VIN checks, law enforcement recording, and other miscellaneous copies.
It's a pleasure of the council, Mr. Clinker.
I move we hear and approve ordinance 2016-14.
Mr. Reynolds?
Second.
Discussion by members of the common council. There being none, Mr. Chosnick, you're listed here.
Well, Deputy Chief Payne.
Oh, good, good.
Good evening, Dave Payne, Deputy Chief of Police, excuse me. Recently, state of Indiana passed a new law that pertains to body worn cameras, and then they incorporated it with vehicle cameras, car cameras that we've had for years. And in that law, it doesn't require that we have them, but if we do have them, it requires that we do certain things. We can, uh... We... They require that we retain the video for a certain period of time, the majority of which is at least 200 days, some of it two years, depending on the nature of what's contained in the video, and some of it will be longer than that while a case is pending in court. They... So we incur costs for the initial setup of the program and the equipment, body of cameras, those kinds of things. We incur additional costs for the storage fees. We store our video in the cloud. And then there's a lot of language in the statute that pertains to what cannot be released inside the video. So, certain depictions of violent acts can't be disclosed, medical information, a variety of, you know, personal information, those kinds of things. But of course, they're collected when we have the body camera on, so it takes time and manpower for somebody to go in and obscure those things from the video. So, those are all factors that we used in determining the cost, what we felt was appropriate for this. The legislature set the cap at $150 per copy of a recording, and with all those things in, taken into consideration, we feel like that's the appropriate amount, and we'd ask you if you could incorporate that into the current ordinance with this fee schedule.
I guess I have a couple of questions. I could ask Mr. Downey, because he's very authoritative on this internet and, you know, copying these things like that. But at any rate, how, uh... What is the status of cameras right now in our department?
We have 119 cameras deployed.
119?
Yes, sir.
And how many officers?
There are 119 that are wearing.
So there's one camera for every officer?
The department has allocated 142 officers, so detectives, administrative people are not wearing those cameras, but patrol officers and anybody working on or off duty in a uniform will wear the cameras.
Anybody that's out on the street and is involved in any kind of work for... They have a camera?
Yes, sir.
Now, what happens? They come in with the camera and they have this material on a flash drive or something. What do they do? What's the steps, if you can break through those?
Sure. The camera itself is, it doesn't have any removable media. It has a battery that can be removed with screwdrivers and things, but it fits into a docking station. Those docking stations are set up with software that restricts what happens to any video on there, and the only thing essentially that is permitted is for it to be taken from off the camera and transmitted to the location in the cloud where it'll be stored, and then we access it via a secure website.
You mentioned 200 days or two years. What will be our process here in Lafayette?
The... All the video needs to be retained for 200 days. If somebody makes a complaint about it or alleges some misconduct, then it has to be maintained, or if they just simply request that we maintain the video, then it has to be held for two years.
So if it is video that no one asks about, it will be disposed of or something in 200 days?
Potentially. That's the minimum requirement. There will be some things that we retain longer because the case is pending in court.
Any question, other questions? Yes, sir, Mr. Brown. The cameras themselves, what is the time limit? I mean, can you get, well, one hour of video, an hour and a half, or what?
The company that we got them from figures an average of two hours of video for a 12-hour day. We... I think we are easily exceeding that right now. We're generating just under four terabytes of video in 30 days. So there's about 10, two and a half ones, yeah. There's about 10 terabytes of video out there right now.
A bunch.
It is. There's no way that we can watch it all.
Thank you. Is that terabytes enough, Bob?
Yeah, I think so.
Thank you, thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Clinker, go ahead.
Started at the interaction then, or you started at the call or in the car, or what's the...
Guys are starting them kind of at different points depending on what's going on, but the vast majority of them will have it going by the time they get there, yeah.
Any other questions?
Just one, I think, from Mr. Chosnick and our esteemed city clerk. Have we given any thought to raising the prices for any of these other services?
I have. A lot of them are statutory, so, you know, we're restricted. This one, because of law effect July 1, and it led us to charge $150, and you heard from Deputy Chief Payne how much work is involved if somebody requests that. In fact, I was at a, you know, municipal lawyer seminar, and the expert said, "The quicker we adopt an ordinance that charges $150, the less the hold of police department will be."
Will it require anybody else with, you know, computer expertise to deal with this? Are you looking forward to hiring anyone else in the police department?
It's early, pretty early to tell. We haven't, to my knowledge, we haven't had any requests since July 1st. We've had plenty in the last couple of months, but now the statute comes into play. So I don't know what the demand will be, but it is certainly a big amount of video to manage.
Do you have a ballpark figure in what this, uh... The technology costs? The hardware?
We've got a lot more ballpark.
It is roughly over five years, $940,000.
$500,000.
Over five years, $940,000.
Oh, okay, okay, good. Thank you. Any questions?
I have one more question. Would this be something that's important enough to waive the rules and have two votes at one time so that they can start charging for this if the requests are coming now?
I don't... Have you had any requests?
I couldn't tell you, to be honest with you.
I don't...
Have requests let it play out.
You know, I think we're doing it pretty actively, so I think you need to save those times that you waive for really important things.
Well, if the requests were spiking already, I just thought we'd need to cover the cost. It is costing the city money, so to protect the taxpayer dollars, I just thought it might be worth it. But if you're comfortable with the amount that's coming in, then...
I think your point is well taken, but I would mention that since we are raising fees, that it maybe deserves a little bit more consideration by people.
I'll go with that.
Thank you. Any questions by members of the audience? There being none, once again, the council. Would the clerk then conduct a roll call vote on ordinance 2016-14 on first reading?
Clinker?
Aye.
Nargie?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Brown? Aye.
Alers Meyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downey?
Aye.
Ordinance passes seven to zero.
Resolution.
Resolution 2016-11, a resolution renewing and extending the term of the Lafayette Urban Enterprise Zone.
A motion to... Here it is.
Sorry. Mr. President, I move to hear and approve resolution number 2016-11.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
Sir?
Thank you. Any questions or comments prior to Mr. Carson's presentation? There being none, Mr. Carson?
Good evening, Dennis Carson, Economic Development Director. This resolution is for extending the Enterprise Zone program for a term of one year from January 1st on 2018 through December 31st, 2018. So, this was, came out of a process with the state legislature where we're trying to look at some more long-term issues with the Enterprise Zone program about changing the program and changing the terms and such. We weren't successful in getting exactly what we wanted, but we were able to get this legislation through this past year to extend the program for one year. So this allows any enterprise zone across the state to, through council action, to extend their term of the program.
Any questions? I guess I have one. Is this a statewide move or something that every...
There's 22 enterprise zones across the state of Indiana in this program.
Will get a one-year extension if their city councils approve.
Correct.
Thank you. Anything else? Thank you, Mr. Carson. Mr. Brown?
Uh, why do we need to extend it for one year? Is this some more brilliant work from our legislature?
I won't comment on that, but...
I think I'm pretty deep, but...
But enterprise zones have a limited term and such, and again, you know, we've been working with the state legislature for several years now, because we do agree with them on the point that we think we need to reinvent the program. Maybe it's a program that's been around since 1983. It was really geared towards heavy manufacturing and some other things. And things have changed quite a bit since then, so we are working with them to look at some new tax incentive, look at some new programs within the Enterprise Zone program. But we also, you know, until we get there, we need to extend the life of our zone, so they granted the one year, so we'll go back next year and hopefully get some new legislation through that will, again, extend the program even longer, but also add some new tools to the program.
Thank you, sir.
Anything else? Thank you, Mr. Carson.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions by members of the audience? There being none, once again, the council, nothing. Would the clerk then conduct a roll call vote on resolution 2016-11?
Clinker?
Aye.
Nargie?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Alers Meyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downey?
Aye.
Resolution passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Don't run off, Mr. Carson. Uh, department head update. Not you, wait a minute. I don't know, there's two agendas here, they're conflicting. The department head update, none? Mr. Carson has a department head update. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Dennis Carson, Economic Development Director. Thanks for taking the time this evening for my presentation. I'll start out with our mission statement from the Economic Development Department, and that is, "The Economic Development Department is committed to improving Lafayette by serving its citizens through balanced growth, preservation, and revitalization. We achieve this through creative public and private engagement that seeks to expand employment opportunities, increase investment, and improve quality of life. We administer programs and funding that support social services, economic development, infrastructure, historic preservation, housing and neighborhood revitalization." So, our staff, we have six staff members, and of course, I'm the director, and then we have, we have three project planner-manager positions. Two are currently filled by Margie Deverall and Adam Murphy, and as you approved tonight, that third project planner-manager will be elevated to an assistant director position. So we really appreciate that. We're going to be interviewing for that position this month and hopefully fill it relatively soon. We also have Joyce Funk, who's our administrative assistant, and this summer, we have a student intern from Ball State University, Dustin House. Our major area focus for the department are public finance through our tax increment financing, business attraction expansion and retention, entrepreneurship, innovation and startups, downtown development, neighborhood development, community housing, land and property development, historic preservation, parking policy and governance, growth policy through annexation, and quality of life through public art initiatives and other programs. We manage in our staff to the redevelopment commission, the redevelopment authority, the Economic Development Commission, historic preservation commission, parking commission, and Lafayette Urban Enterprise Association, which again, thank you for approving that extension tonight, and also Matchbox Co-Working Studio. We partner with a great deal of people across the region, primarily Greater Lafayette Commerce, particularly on economic development, Wabash River Enhancement Corporation on Riverfront Development, Visit Lafayette, West Lafayette, and Tourism and Downtown Programming, Friends of Downtown on Downtown Programming as well, Purdue University and Purdue Research Park with Matchbox Co-Working Studio and other economic development activities, West Lafayette, Tivanyou County, many times again on economic development activities, and then, of course, our city departments, and I couldn't do my job without it. So appreciate all their help and support. Our redevelopment commission, we are staffed with that again, and that oversees our tax increment financing. We have five Tiff districts, and those are the Consolidated Central Creasy District, the Twickenham District to the South of Lafayette, the McCarty District, which is one of three that we share with the county, the Southeast Industrial District, and the Hoosier-Hartland District is one we just approved a couple of years ago. It's our newest one out north of I-65 for more industrial expansion. We have, for about 10 years in the... Been in the job, we did not do very many bonds, but in the past couple of years, we've done several, which we've done a $16.1 million bond from the Creasy Central Tiff District for several projects, a $4.4 million bond for the Mark and the Riverfront Promenade Project, $1.5 million one for the build out of Matchbox Co-Working Studio, and then one for the Old Romney Road Project from the Twickenham District at $5.1 million. Economic development centers are very important and what's something we manage through our department, and we have currently 43 active abatements, which represent over $1.3 billion of investment in real and personal property. These companies have created over 8,000 new jobs and retained 3,500 jobs. Some are more recent notable abatements have been SIA with $140 million investment, creating 1,200 jobs. Wintech, a local company that provides internet services, a $1 million real estate investment, $2 million in machinery and equipment, 12 new jobs. Santo America, which is an SIA supplier, so we're seeing a lot more activity from the SIA suppliers that want to be closer to the plant, $5 million investment, 62 jobs. And GE with their maintenance and repair operation, which is additional investment on top of what they've already been doing, $15 million and 30 new jobs. Some of our more notable projects as well through the department have been Streetscape. We've been doing that since 2004. We just completed Streetscape Phase 5, which is various locations in the downtown area, and in the spring, we started on Streetscape for Main Street Phases 1 and 2. So we're very excited to get that kicked off. So, we're very excited to get that, um, kicked off. Uh, Streetscape Phase Five was about a two million dollar project. The Main Street's gonna be about a five million dollar project, and that'll be finished at, at the end of this year. Doing things a little bit differently on the Main Street, um, side of things. We wanna make that more pedestrian-friendly, so there's more areas for people to congregate, more opportunities for outdoor dining. We also did a marketing plan, uh, with something new as well, too, to help the businesses through the process and such, and who, of course, inform the public. We have a website. Downtown Lafayette is open to keep everybody updated on that. We've provided advertising and marketing materials for the businesses downtown, working through with IDC Marketing, and we've also had some ambassadors for downtown as well, too. So, we've done a, a series of YouTube videos, and we have William Digby and the Marquis de Lafayette, played by Will Miller and Mark Brandeary. So, we've done, and again, um, two videos on that are on YouTube now. We'll be releasing the third one as well, too. Some of the other larger projects in the area, the one-on-one Main Street project, which is on the side, the former side of Lafayette Savings Bank, and that is, um, the developer on that is the Daleen Group out of Indianapolis, and it's a mixed-use structure of sixteen thousand square feet of office space for the regional headquarters of Old National Bank. It'll also have almost four thousand square feet of other additional commercial space for, um, yet identified tenants. It'll have ninety-nine apartment units with thirteen studios, twenty, sixty-three one-bedroom and twenty-three two-bedroom units, and the amenities include a fitness center, roof courtyard, bicycle parking, and maintenance, dog wash, two elevators, thirty-three surface parking spaces, and a hundred and level, lower level parking garage spaces. Again, working with the Robus, Wabash River Enhancement Corporation to one of the first major projects, um, the riverfront, and that's the Riverfront Promenade, which will be, be behind the Mark project, and we're finding, um, funding for that through the bond as well as other TIF cash funding. Uh, we completed our first phase of the Wayfinding Project, which is a project that's been a long time coming, but we've got fifty-nine signs that, that are placed from I sixty-five through, on South Street, through the downtown area, pointing to various destinations in and around the downtown area, and also over to West Lafayette and Purdue University. We'll be doing a second phase of that soon, which will be nineteen additional signs that include trailblazing signs from I sixty-five on State Route Thirty-Eight through the downtown area as well. Matchbox Co. Working Studio, I mentioned earlier, is doing very well. As of today, we have two hundred and thirty-two members, and we've only been open for two years, so we're very excited about that. We do a lot of programming for, um, local entrepreneurs and businesses as well, and then we had, we hired two staff members this year, Amanda Finley, who's our operations director, and Emily Carter, our community curator. Um, also, um, as mentioned, quality of life and particularly, uh, place making and downtown development, and we have so, uh, public art projects going on. Um, one of the larger ones is the bicentennial Gateway Sculpture Project. The, these are two sculptures that'll be, one will be located at the Chase Plaza, and one will be right across the street, um, around the Red Seven at the Renaissance Place there. My hats off to, um, the co-chairs for this project, um, Jim Bowden Miller and Patty Jiskie. They helped us raise over two hundred thousand dollars for the project. And it will be, the sculpture and the site will be one of the stops on the Indiana's bicentennial torch relay. So, the, the plaza, Chase Plaza's being redeveloped right now, and the foundation's in, so we'll have that sculpture up probably in August or so and ready for the October, um, dedication of the torch relay. Uh, Margie Deverall, again, is spearheading this, the bicentennial, um, sculpture project and also other public art projects, um, particularly the Lafayette Arts Center Stage Project, which was building off our successful Small Spaces Project. It's a hundred and forty-five thousand dollar project with a contribution to the city of fifty thousand dollars, but we also got raised outside funding for that as well as grants from the state, and that includes, um, funding for the bicentennial sculpture, a Sarat-inspired mural that's also down close to the, um, Chase Plaza. An Alley Palooza event where we, uh, took the alley which, um, between Main and, um, Columbia Street, between Fourth and Fifth Street, and we did a, a weekend event there where we did, um, more public art on the walls in the alley, and also had invited the public, particularly children, um, to participate as well, too. We had music, fun, and events and food, and then we also were, be doing two more, um, sculptures on Main Street as part of Streetscape Project as well, too. Uh, just quickly, I'll, you know, go over some of the, um, highlight some of the other projects that we're involved in, particularly with the bonds that I mentioned earlier, that, again, it's for a variety of projects, um, particularly for, um, public facility improvements that we're doing with the depot, and also doing the Long Center, so doing extensive repairs and upgrades in the HVAC, the electrical, the plumbing, the whole infrastructure of both of those facilities. Other road projects that include Rome Drive, um, the reconstruction of that off of Shenandoah Drive, which is complete now. Green Bush Street, um, over by Market Square, where we're doing improvements there, including a new traffic signal by the Payless Plaza, and that'll be finished soon. And then, um, we're, we, we approved this morning a contract to do repairs on the parking garage over here. They're much needed. And then we also, uh, mentioned the bond on the Twickenham District that was for Old Romney Road, the improvements there. And then we have done, um, some concept planning for, uh, what we call the Library Park, which is the Jonesy's Historic Gas Station over here. We wanna stabilize that building, and then also kind of imagine what could be around there, particularly as, as a public park. Uh, so other things include that we have, um, funded also the Upper Burlowitz and Alexander Ross Infrastructure Master Plans. These are areas out east, close to I sixty-five. They have a, a road potential for, um, commercial and industrial development, so we're, you know, planning for the infrastructure, the utilities, the, the drains, the roads, transportation system out there. Um, gonna be starting on a, a new parking studies for the downtown with a lot of interest in downtown, like the Mark Project and other things that are coming downtown. We need to look at the long-term parking, look at other areas where we might have structured parking, like another parking garage and such. Um, we also, um, just recently signed a contract with, um, Purdue University to expand their, um, bike share program through Zagster, so we're really excited about that. There will be three stations in the downtown area, so they'll have another opportunity for different, um, kind of transportation options in the downtown, and also talking to Zipcar about expanding their program here in Lafayette and having those vehicles in the downtown area as well, too. Historic preservation, we do a lot there, trying to preserve our community assets. Um, recently, we're gonna, we're looking at creating two new districts, um, up in the Highland Park area and also in the Saint Mary's, um, neighborhood area. And then we work with the Faith Community Development Corporation, providing some funding for the Hartford Hub over in the Lincoln neighborhood of Sixth and Hartford Street. And Centennial Town Homes has been an exciting project. Been working with the past couple of years, working with a private developer to redevelop the former Midwest rental site into twelve owner-occupied, um, town homes there. The first two phases are complete, and the third phase, um, will be, um, constructed this fall, and we have buyers, um, lined up for those. And of course, working with other departments and, um, helping with their needs, particularly public safety, uh, we've been funding a fi- purchase of fire trucks and also police cars, and then working on complete streets, um, policies to, again, um, encourage more alternative transportation, particularly, um, pedestrian and bicycling activities. And then lastly, I'll touch upon what Adam Murphy does in our department, and he mainly works with our homelessness outreach programs. Um, he's got a really, uh, tough program and a lot of work that he does in there, and I'll just highlight that the major program that he supervises is our Shelter Plus Care Program, which is twenty-eight permanent supportive housing units for the crime and homeless with a coexisting mental illness, substance abuse problem, and/or HIV/AIDS. So, that program has been very successful for us to get folks off the street and into the services, provide them housing first, provide them wraparound services around that to deal with their issues and particular problems, and it's been a very effective program, and it's been one that has saved a lot of taxpayer money as well, too. So, that in a very quick nutshell, is the Economic Development Department, and be happy to answer any questions.
Well, you've obviously, uh, provided an awful lot of information to us, and I wonder if there's some way that that information could be disseminated to the public? Look into that, because I think, uh, we don't have a huge crowd here tonight, but I think that, uh, many of the things you've talked about would be vitally interested to the public.
Yeah, we could do that two ways. One, you know, this presentation I gave tonight, we can put it up on our website, but we also just, I think, last month, completed our annual reports on their, um, for our department as well, too, and that's, I believe, it's on the website now, too, so, but I can, you know, also post this as well.
Do you have any record as to how many times the website is, uh, people walk into it?
I don't have those, but I know I can get those from the IT department, yeah. Yeah.
Cause I, I think these are things that the public would be extremely interested in. They see a lot of the construction going on, because they're not real sure what it is.
Right. So, sort of going door-to-door, I guess we'll put it on the website.
Sounds like it's been a very busy department.
Yes, sir. Mr. President, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Uh, I compliment you on the downtown looks very, uh, I shouldn't get a lot of activity. I just have one question. I was reading, uh, about the food truck. Uh, it didn't bother me the first time. Uh, I'm setting a restaurant downtown, and, uh, I look out the window, and here's a food truck setting within, you know, Rock Throw, and then another time setting outside. And how do we support all these people that are paying taxes, businesses downtown, and then a food truck rolls up and ten, twenty people line up? Are we taking this away from the businesses that are there? And besides, some of them are decorated rather different. I mean, I, believe me, I grew up in the sixties, so I know all about that. But, uh, it just seems like it takes the attraction away from what's there, and I know you say you have a food, food truck Friday, uh, is that the only day they're supposed to be there?
No, we do that at Matchbox, where we invite the food trucks to come, uh, over at Matchbox, and we open up Matchbox to the, actually to the public and, you know, allow folks to, to partake and get food from the food truck, and then actually sit inside Matchbox and, and eat it there, so we kind of open up...
So, but they're still free to roam up and down the street wherever they, and park wherever they want. There's no parking restrictions. There's nothing that's...
No, as long as they're within the, their time restriction, um, there's no other restrictions, so, you know, most of the spaces are two hours, as long as they don't violate that, then...
So, violating the business they're setting in front doesn't make any difference?
Well, there's kind of two sides of that, you know. Um, I look at it as, um, you know, a, encouraging entrepreneurship, and I'm, I'm hoping that, that some of these businesses will actually, a lot of them in other places have turned into brick-and-mortar businesses. You know, they've started out as a food truck. They, they, that's kind of their test marketing, so then they, they've come and started a restaurant and such, so I just think it gives more options for folks downtown. It puts a little more people on the streets, makes things a little more lively and such, and then hopefully, you know, these people will, uh, may turn into a brick-and-mortar business. Kind of like the farmer's market. We've encouraged a lot of people to be a vendor at the farmer's market, and they do a lot of test marketing.
That's one day, you know what I'm saying? And this is, this is when you, it seems like, one particular day, I seen three, you know, within, uh, very short distance from each other. And I, I was just curious. I didn't know what their, how, how, you know, how the control, I mean, you know, obviously, they take up two or three parking spaces and, and, uh, so on, so I, I didn't know how it was monitored.
Right.
I think you bring up a very pertinent point. I see this as a, a change in our society. Uh, some communities have, this is a big deal.
Right.
Food trucks, and I can see them taking business away from people who are paying taxes. Hopefully, these folks aren't paying taxes.
I mean, like I said, it kind of goes both ways, because you see some communities where there'll be thirty food trucks downtown all over the place. People really embrace it, and then there's some places like, um, Chicago that, in the loop, puts, uh, major restrictions on them, so, yeah.
Something that we probably ought to keep track of.
I just, I, it just seems like, once you notice them the first time, and now there's, you know, now there's three, you know, next time it may be five, and, you know, and I don't even know how many flights, I don't even know what they're restrict, you know, I don't even know how it's done, but it just, it was, it was just, one of them was particularly really an isolate, and it took away from everything you'd already done, and it just knocked that right out, it just...
Yeah, something we'll keep track of.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Oh, thank you, Mr. Carson.
Thank you.
Anybody in the audience wish to, uh, bring up any points that Mr. Carson has brought up? There being none, I think that now is the time for, uh, oh, no, excuse me, reports by the mayor, special committee, councilman. Time for public comment. Barry? You're not the best, are you?
Seven hour, Derek, so...
No, I'm sorry.
I've got a lot of things on my mind and what, uh, I can't do tonight.
Bless your heart. Mr. Heidi? Not here, we'll have to say.
Public comment here. No, public comment. Let's get there.
John?
Come on up.
I'm forward, please.
I'm here to talk about the length of fireworks. They go on for ten days.
If, uh, you need to state your name.
Connie Snyder.
And your address, please, Connie.
Go three Wellington Court.
Right, thank you.
Um, they go on for ten days. I'm not a killer joy, but there's a lot of animals that run away, and I talked to a couple of you here today, and your animals are on anxiety pills, the same as mine, and some animals are never found again. They won't go out and potty. They won't eat. They're nervous wreck, plus the war veterans, the PS, the PTSD they have. You know, they fought for us, and I think we need to fight for them, because this is a bad time for those war veterans, and I can't imagine what they go through. And a lot of times, um, they're not doing the fireworks at the time designated. They start in the afternoon early, and you don't know where they are. You can't call the, the police, because you have no idea where they are, and by the time they got there, they'd be done anyway. And I talked to someone today that they live on the south side, and at three o'clock in the morning, they were letting out firecrackers, and the husband did go talk to them, they quit, but still, it was three o'clock in the morning, and I don't imagine the neighbors appreciated that too much. So, I'm here to see if there's anything we can do to get the fireworks cut down to five days instead of ten days. The city ordinance, and that you re, re, rewip, can't say, re-written, to get that done instead of the state law, but do you have to coincide with the state? Can you do your own little thing here?
Go ahead. I, I would react to it also.
Oh, thank you very much for your comments. You, you can stay up there in case you have any follow-up questions. Uh, as we've, we've discussed this before, the state law sets a minimum standard that, um, or a maximum standard, I guess, that we can come down to. Our city ordinance is as restrictive as the state law will allow. In fact, the state law would allow it to be, to do much more fireworks if you wanted to, but we've adopted the most restrictive window that the state will allow us, and so for our, our ordinance to become any more restrictive, and I told people this council would probably be in favor of it being more restrictive if they were allowed, allowed to.
Yes, we would.
Without a change in state law, um, there's nothing that this council can do. We have the most restrictive ordinance that's allowed by law.
Now, is, is it only allowed on the fourth?
No.
No.
Twenty-ninth to the ninth.
Labor Day, Memorial Day.
It's twenty-ninth, Kevin's right. It's twen- it's ten days over July fourth, and then it's Memorial Day.
Labor Day.
Labor Day and New Year's Eve.
New Year's Eve.
New Year's Eve.
So, it's four times during the year. There's a ten-day window for each time?
No, not, those other days aren't ten-day windows. Just July fourth is ten-day, and, uh, but we would...
Amen. Barry? Doggone it. Oh, I'm saying.
That's, uh, Perry Barber, thirty-seven hundred Redwood Avenue. This is one of these things I was going to say, but, uh, you guys forced me into it. This is one thing we disagree with. I personally, and I agree with the la- lady, I think, I applaud her for, uh, have her opinion. I think that's great, but I a- also think that we should have the freedom of shoot firecrackers at a decent time, any time of the year. If I wanna do it at my birthday, if Bob wants to do it, Melissa wants to do it on her wedding anniversary, she can't do it unless it's always struck the time. I think as a citizen, that's what the, pe- people fought for, the wars fought for our freedom. Uh, and I think to saying these, these days, but I think you, three o'clock in the morning, that's ridiculous. Midnight, that, that's inappropriate. Ten o'clock is appropriate. You have time, any time of the year. You don't wanna shoot firecrackers after, two weeks after the Fourth of July anyway. If, go ahead, go ahead.
Well, it's interesting. The men and women who have fought for that are freedoms. Many of them have come back from those war zones with disabilities, and they can't handle the fireworks. Now, who is going to protect them?
I wasn't done with that. You just give me...
Well, I think it's our duty to, to defend them.
But when you say we can't do anything, we, we can only have it one day a year, that's not really what, we gotta protect them too, absolutely. I'm not saying don't protect their veterans, that, no, I'm here to protect our v- veterans, but we're here to protect everyone. We need to put, instead of saying one day a year or two days a year, we need to say... We need to put, instead of saying one day a year, or two days a year, we need to say, hey, if, if you do it, if you do it outside of ten o'clock, there will be a fine, and a meaning.
It is my guess that the vast majority of people in our communities and country agree with the law as it's stated. That enough is enough.
We don't need to take our rights away from.
Take it to the state government. They have provided a law which is restrictive, and they will hand out a decree, or the Supreme Court, or somebody will. But I think that, I speak for the people in this particular room, we are happy with the law the way it is written, we are not happy with the way it is abused.
I think we need to worry about more, uh, finding people instead of punishing the, everyone else.
Again, most of the times in this country, it is judged by majority rule, and that's what is happening here. And that's my three minutes. Thank you, Barry.
Y'all have a great night.
Thank you, you do the same. Would you call Heidi? See if he will move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Okay, all right.
Second.
Second, all those favors signify by saying aye on both same side. Thank you.